Need to give. Do you need to have co-host abilities?
Um, let me check, since I can unmute myself, I think I. Okay, I can unmute myself, so. Okay, you guys can hear me now? Okay, so yeah, so I guess I don't need to be co-host, so that's fine.
Okay.
Great, alright, um, so since um, I am not there, you guys tell me if anyone is there for privilege of the floor. Okay, so we'll move on then, um, and just start talking with Guillermo, I will, I will mention that right after Guillermo will actually approve the minutes from the last meeting, which I forgot to put on the agenda, then we'll go on to the town board report, and then we'll continue our discussion of the solar siding law. And finally talk about our last couple of meetings for the year, so, um, Guillermo, you are on, um, you know, I posed you some questions, you may have various things you want to say to us, other members of the board may have questions, so however you want to proceed is fine, and for the sort of um, discussion, Barb, mostly I'll let you sort of, because I can't necessarily see what's in somebody's eyes or whatever, so um, feel free to call on people and I'll interject when I can.
I can't see everybody's eyes either, but I'll do my best.
Okay, sounds great.
Who's taking notes?
Oh, thank you, yes, could someone help me with that? I'll take some notes, but if there could be somebody else, that'd be great.
I can take notes.
Great, thanks, Adam. Great. And I should have everybody know, so Guillermo has uh, this afternoon sent me uh, some comments directly on our existing law that I have not had a chance to look at, but we will look at and then discuss uh, as a board, uh, and so those are, you know, in addition and above what we are talking about now, which is more focused on on agri voltaic, so on we go.
Yeah, and mainly I, I'm just happy to answer questions, I know that you had Caleb here before, and I think um, he has a lot of great hands-on experience, I, I think, you know, I, I would support most of all of what you said, um, so I saw the solar siding laws exist in the draft, and there's nothing about agri voltaic specifically in there now, so.
Let me just interrupt a minute and, and say, Bill, um, somebody just walked in, do you want to go back to um, privilege of the floor?
Yeah, if, if they want to address the, the planning board, I think we can, we can do that.
Let me just ask you if you could say your name for Bruce Murray, and do you want to say anything for the privilege of the floor? Okay, so it's Bruce Murray, uh, doesn't want to say anything, so I think we're good, so.
Yeah, thanks, um, so I was just gonna look real quick on the list of questions you sent me, um, but I can say that there's nothing currently in the draft law about agri voltaic specifically, but there's a few things that I sent to the bill that were just general comments about, you know, this might be worried a little bit differently, that might that has nothing to do with agri voltaic or that might affect agri voltaic if you were to consider putting that in your solar siding law, so basically I, I get the sense that what you'd like to do potentially is support agri voltaic where possible, um, so I, I can kind of walk you through, I, I won't, you know, with my position, I can't really supply the language specifically, I can kind of point you to other places.
Sure.
And there aren't that many other places that have put it specifically, and so we were working with the county IDA on ways to incentivize putting agri voltaics on properties, and there's things that they could with the leverage they have, um, but in that conversation, it's, it's just the hardest thing is really enforcement, like if you were to say um, you give someone special treatment because they put some sort of farming practice under and around the solar panels, who's going to make sure that they're still doing it five years from now? And what a, you know, if you were to say, we give you, you know, a break on your property taxes or better file it or something, you sort of have to make sure they're doing it, and if they're not, then the leverage you have is the financial one of, we gave you an incentive, we're going to take that away now.
So, so uh, i- i- do you know of other towns that have done something like that, and if so, um, is there um, enough time that has elapsed so that you could say what mechanism they're using for enforcement?
No. Not to my mind, there's not any.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, on the enforcement side, I can't say anything.
Okay.
Except, like I just said, so if you were to give them, you know, uh, every month they're paying, or every year they're paying a certain amount to the town, you go back to a default that's much higher if they aren't doing that, the other issue is that if the developer's not the farmer, so they're hiring somebody to do vegetation management anyway, and often, like the most common thing for them, that works for them and for so for the ag is sheep grazing, sheep do a really good job of keeping the vegetation down, um, and they can sort of be seen as a sort of ag enterprise, um, but with crops or anything like that, you have to give some leeway to the farmer that if they have a bad year, maybe they didn't hit what you thought was the goal, so agri voltaic, you have to sort of define as, you know, they're producing a certain amount of revenue or something, there has to be some standard that they have to meet, they can't just, you know, have two sheep on there.
One of the thoughts that came up at one of our meetings was instead of saying to the project that, that, that project needs to produce a certain financial amount of money every year, it's the state has to be leased to a farmer, and that that farmer under New York State ag law has to qualify as a farmer, and that his operation is bringing in, his total operation is bringing in enough to qualify as a legitimate farmer, just like, you know, not every parcel of a farmer's land is bringing in ten thousand dollars a year to qualify as a farmer, um, so I thought that could be, and of course, I love everybody else's opinion, get around that issue of, does that piece of land where the solar panels are need to produce that much, and that would give everybody a leeway, but it would, the only downside I see is that for vegetation management, it, it would then have to be a farmer, right? That's a downside or not, like, I mean, it would have to be a farmer who's otherwise making ten thousand dollars a year to qualify, it couldn't be just anyone who's like, I'm farming and isn't a legit commercial farmer at, for a living.
Yeah, so depending on the size of the array or the project, most of the revenue would still be on some other sites, so if you're collectively getting ten thousand dollars, you're saying this is part of the whole, and this is considered a farm because it's part of this farmer's whole operations, it's then a scenario could develop where they're getting ten thousand dollars on the other lands, they don't need this farm at all, it's just a lot easier to mow it. Um, so it doesn't guarantee that it would be farmed in any way, but it.
And I'm going to jump in for a sec, so some of this is stuff I was going to bring up later, because I've been using on exactly this question too. So, um, as I wrote in one email to the planning board, you know, we currently, the law, our zoning law does not require a special use permit for a large solar array, and I recommend that be changed, and what I think that might allow for an enforcement mechanism is that on some periodic basis, maybe it's every five years, that the developer or owner at that point, owner operator, has to submit a farming plan. Um, and you know, so yeah, they have a couple of bad years, fine, and, but that um, that might be one way, that they don't submit a farming plan, and if they like, did a crappy job the previous time in following their farming plan, that they don't get a renewal of the special use permit, that might be an avenue, um, I don't know if you, you know, hit that anywhere else, um, but I think something like that where essentially the, the operation is definitely reviewed on some periodic basis uh, would be, and, and then the, the, you know, the, the stick is, yeah, you, you have to pay more money then, because you uh, don't get this pilot break or, or whatever, so that's one possibility, and I agree that um, was suggesting here, it might work to sort of spread out where the money's being earned, but I agree with Guillermo's critique that it could be, oh yeah, you get two dollars on the solar field, you know, and all, all your real revenue is somewhere else, so I'm concerned about that. But I also think elsewhere, we're going to put some things in that, that strongly push towards grazing for vegetation management, and I in general would not particularly count grazing towards credit for an agri voltaic operation, grazing is vegetation management, and agri voltaics, which again, communities have defined, uh, I think it's going to be more towards the animal husbandry and crop raising, anyway, the brief point was, maybe enforcement could be through a renewable permit.
But can they renew a permit even if they don't do agri voltaics, if they want to just mow it?
Um, yes, but then whatever break they were getting would have to go away, and, and, and that's a big question, I know Guillermo was in the middle of talking to the Ithaca area Economic Development about this, um, and we'll get to this more later, the whole pilot thing um, and the, the lack of role of municipalities in that i- is an issue, and so it's unclear to me, I will admit, that we can offer a break in Caroline, that really is in the hands of this development agency. Um, so we have to figure out if we're going to incentivize versus require, um, if we require it, then if they don't do it, they don't get the renewal and they have to stop operation. If we're incentivizing it and they don't do it, then we take away the incentive and we live with that, that's how I see it breaking, falling out. Sorry, go on, unless anybody else there has a question?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, I think requiring it would be much harder, you know, being able to pull an incentive that you've given that is probably a lot more doable.
How could you stop the operation? Yeah, I don't see how you could do that.
Or you can pull their permit, I mean, if they do break under the laws, yeah, but if they do break the other laws, if they if they, for some reason, it isn't being operated safely, they can be stopped, but.
And, and typically, don't you have some sort of um, uh, you know, uh, deposit on, on file, uh, you know, to, to clean up an array?
Well, that's a whole different, so there's decommissioning.
Right, but I mean, if, if they were required to decommission because they weren't, you know, to Bruce's question, they were required to decommission because they were no longer following the rules.
Yeah.
There would be an escrow account of some sort to cover that in theory at least, right?
Yeah, and that's in the current.
Yeah, that's in the current, yeah.
That's pretty common, I, I, I would, yeah, definitely strongly recommend, like, it sounds like it's been seen by lawyers, and that point, it, it has to really stick that they have a, an amount that you can all agree to, I've seen developers fight when towns require an additional amount than what the state basically says they have to put in, so there's you, you can ask for, you know, them to provide engineered study showing the amount to remove every, all those systems, um, but they might come back and say, well, we're going to actually pay this much, and so it, it's unclear, because none of these have been decommissioned, whether that's an actual, of like, what is the actual amount, because we're sort of guessing.
But what, what you're saying is, uh, they challenged how much they, the develop, developer or owner should provide for decommissioning at the point when they were, uh, about to decommission?
No, at the very beginning, so at the beginning of signing the, not the contract, but trying to get the permits to do the development in the first place, that has to be approved by the town typically, unless it's a really large project, and it's another thing, but in the airline, it would generally be responsible projects, and um, those, you would have to approve and they come back and say legally, this is how much we can have to put away, and you can't tell us to put away more, things like, so.
What, what legal, what law would they be relying?
Nice sort of guidance, basically.
Oh, okay.
So, let me interject again, so the language in our law that's on the books, it's, it's, you know, we're revising it, but that is based very closely on a model law that already is put out, you know, three, four years ago, so it's pretty closely to whatever their guidance was on that, so I, I don't know, that, that should mean it's okay, but Bruce, you guys went through this with the distributed sun um, thing, was there any hassle o- over the escrow amount, or did you guys not talk about that?
Um, we didn't really talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that at this point, but just know that that's a concern that, that some municipalities do have, that we just don't know what it's going to cost to decommission an actual project.
That's just because nothing's that old enough to decommission. Well, because also, don't they just, yes, the panels get older, and it's, it's cheaper to replace the panels and just keep going.
Could be, yeah, there have been projects where they replaced panels, but it's not, like, again, it's not because of aging, they, they they've gotten significantly more efficient in the last ten years, and it's unlikely they're going to get much more efficient in the next ten years, unless there's a new kind of technology that's cheapened up. With silicon solar, it's like, they're now bifacial, there's a bunch of stuff they've done, there's not a whole lot you can do.
Yeah, okay, Bill, I apologize, I, I, we did talk about decommissioning, but I don't remember anything in particular as far as figures go, but I know we, we were pretty happy with what they had said, because they were going to handle the deal, um, but other than that, I can't remember, I'd have to go back, look at notes and.
We thought we put into our reciting law that the amount on, the amount on deposit for decommissioning would be revisited periodically.
Correct.
Uh, yeah, was that?
Say, yeah, that, something like that, I just.
Yeah, okay, so they did.
So there should be an inflation escalator built in and periodic check, um, and the concern of mine that when you periodically check, I don't know what leverage you have at that point. They say, you know, it's enough money, you say it's not, they're already up and operating, I don't know what you can do about it, so it's good to have a period of check, but.
Right, so, so that's where the, the special use permit comes into play, and, and I would expect that if the town tried to not renew that, that that would be challengeable in court, and so you'd have to have really good reasons that you weren't renewing it and getting into a big mess. Um, but if the agreement was, for example, that you have to be doing farming on the, on the parcel to get this permit, that would, to me, seem to be a pretty strong case. Weaker is, oh, the escrow should be ten percent more or ten percent less, that becomes harder to say you're going to cancel the permit on, on that basis, so I can see how that gets to be a mess. But um, let's move on to, um, just in terms of grazing, is that pretty well accepted from developers that you know, or is that still kind of a push to make them do that? I mean, Caleb was saying that by and large, it's actually just as cost effective to do it that way, um, but the developers are just sort of less used to doing it, um, and of course, the extra hassle having to find someone to do all that, um, so he's still finding it a bit of an uphill battle, but not a, a huge one, so how, what's your take on that?
Yeah, it really depends on the developer, um, and for grazing, you don't have to do very much in the system design, there's not a lot of changes you need to make, um, but they're pretty open to it, and there's some that are very open to it, um, and there's some that just won't do it all, they won't do anything, they, they want to fence it off, they don't want anybody in there, so I think for some, it's more a liability issue, um, the fewer people you have inside the fence, the less headaches they have to deal with, they don't have somebody, you know, with any kind of equipment, even a a pickup truck like bumping their panels or whatever, so there's some that just don't want to deal with it at all, and they'll have somebody come in with sort of what they recognize as safe equipment to just mow it, and that's it, um, but others are using the grazing, so there's a whole slew, but some are using the grazing as like look at us, we're doing agri voltaics, you know, look at us, we're doing, we're supporting the ag community in this, in this area, um, NYSURDA gives special treatment for ones that um, have an ag plan, so if you get to a certain size, they're required to have an ag plan, but even if you don't get to that size, they know that a lot of communities see it as beneficial if you have an ag plan, and the ag plants that we've seen are almost entirely grazing, so that's it, you know, so it's basically the fallback that they all, that the developers who are open to doing any ag plan are doing grazing, that's, that's it, um, beyond that.
But, but even on the, on the tour that we took, when, when the, uh, was it Altus who was the company, um, you know, when he was asked, um, you know, what's the biggest constraint you have to agri voltaics? I mean, his response was, you know, a willing farmer to, to do this, and so even though they may want to be doing agri voltaics, there's not the, the ability to do it because there's no one willing to farm it, it, do, does that, I mean, does that seem like a legit response to you?
Well, Altus now is saying that after the fact, so when it first started, they weren't jumping to, to like support ag in that community, so they're very much like using it as, this is a great example, and um, Demetrius, you know, wasn't the developer who worked on the project when it was developed, so I'm not knocking them, I think that they've done a good thing, and they can point to it, it's like, you know, we're doing it. I think they've now tried it on a bunch of other projects, and yes, in some places you can't find a grazer.
Yeah.
Um, and Caleb would know better, but uh, it really depends. You know, some farmers, you know, if you, you're leasing land from a farmer, some of them are interested in then becoming grazers, they're like, you know, I can do that.
Right.
It's not that much work compared to other kinds of farming, sort of, so some farmers that are actually a belt farmer on the land
Yeah.
will do it, and some won't, so it really depends, and I think the bigger issue which Caleb has also downplayed, um, and I don't know how to resolve it, it, however many sheep you have, there's no market for them, so. He will say, and a lot of people will say, you know, we import ninety percent of our lamb, mutton, everything from New Zealand right now. We eat plenty of lamb, but we have no processing facility, we have no transportation, so it's not the same as like chickens or pigs or cows, dairy especially, like you, you can't just use those channels for now, lamb and, and sheep, um.
But it is a chicken and the egg problem, right, if there, if there was, were so many more to process, then would that support the development of processing facilities?
Probably.
I, I think it's a, a, like a beginning of an industry, I mean, Caleb's kind of a pioneer in it, and
Yeah.
I think once it becomes more developed, it'll beat more processors, because we can do our, our own land. I know that Caleb doesn't do it for wool or for fleece very much.
There's no market for wool.
Right, and, and creates more work too.
Yeah, we have somebody, we're working with a sheep farmer in Lansing that, um, she wants to do wool or like Macy's, like she used to work for Macy's and the wool department, and she, now she farmer, she wants to kind of grow that industry, or like sort of the Gucci market, higher market, cashmere sweater kind of things.
Right.
Maybe, but you know, the actual wool market in New York State is, you know, you'll never make anything off of it, it's a lot of work for it.
Yeah.
So even the sheep farming, it's like you're getting paid to mow the grass basically, and if you can make something off the sheep, bonus.
I mean, Caleb's found several different avenues to make money off of sheep, and other than the wool, but. Well, I think it was also he was making other money off of the solar farm besides sheep. Right, the primary is getting paid to mow it with sheep, but like, he also sells rams to hunting preserves.
Right.
Which is funny, but people do it, and he also sells whole sheep to lots of different religious people who want to come and buy them alive still, and um, so he, he found, he's found lots of different ways, but he has a lot of sheep, and during the winter, he has to bring them all back. So it's, it's similar to me as if you were going to mow, you need lots of equipment, you need things to all of it, so it's not really much different, but that's why I think it will eventually mature into a real industry, I think it will.
Yeah, exactly, at least you can park the mower in the shed and forget about it for the winter, it's kind of hard to deal with all the sheep.
Trust me, my wife has horses, eh?
Yeah, so um, so, which brings us to non-grazing, because I think that's sort of the, for me, the heart of, of real agri voltaic, so you know, there is the grazing for vegetation management, and basically folks have to do it, and, you know, I think maybe we'll take some steps to try to make that even more encouraged in our law, but outside of grazing, what is the attitude of the developers towards other kinds of farming, whether it be crops or other animals or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, most, again, most of, then it becomes even harder, so it's an even harder sell, um, hands-on, like picking of crops, because then you're talking, crops have to be maximum height, uh, usually they require them to be lower than eighteen inches, there's not much that grows under eighteen inches, um, and so you can get exemptions, so we've done research where uh, we get exemptions for a four-foot row of crops between rows of panels that is allowed to be four feet high, at that point, you're basically not shaving the panels at all, in, depending on the array spacing and things, but so you can try to work with the developer to get, you know, these select areas that can be taller, um, but it's a lot harder to get them to accept that sort of stuff in, in their rows. Um, colleague on campus is doing the actual on-the-ground plant research on solar sites. She pointed out that they'll let her do it if it's every other row, so the developer has access to all the panels, um, in case there's an issue, they have to replace panels, um, if the farm equipment shoots off a rock and it cracks a panel or something, they can come in and replace panels, um, otherwise they're going to drive right over the crops, um, so she's made it so that every other row is kind of maintained. So there's things you can do, um, I think the biggest thing upfront is getting the developer to even be part of that conversation, there's some things that even Caleb will say, like there's certain tracking systems that do not work even with sheep, like there's way too much infrastructure in, you know, holding up the panels, um, guide wires and things that even, it doesn't even work for mowing, like it, it's just impossible to get in there, so you have to kind of work with the developer to like, not do certain things. As we're getting more and more tracking panels, some of the tracking systems have these mechanisms that at the end of every row, they turn, and so you're blocking off, you can't turn any, you can't get any equipment down the road. So if there's any kind of equipment, no matter how small the tractor is or whatever it is, you want to make sure that they don't use that kind of tracking system, um, he's trying to get more developers to get systems that will go, if they are tracking, they'll go fully vertical or fully horizontal, um, they'll, they'll go horizontal, but if, unless it's horizontal tall enough, it doesn't help very much, but fully vertical, you can get equipment down the roads, so in theory, you could get like a hay equipment or something, if the roads are wide enough apart, you could get thousands of graves in there, you know, you could do a lot of more things if the developer's willing to get fully vertical or, um, maybe taller, taller costs more, that's the issue. Um, so especially for crops, if you, in Europe, they do more of this because they have smaller farm equipment, um, and the equipment that we have here just doesn't work that well under existing panel structure, so again, if you can get it fully vertical, um, that helps a lot, if you can, um, yeah, otherwise you're not going to get very close to the panels, you're going to rely on that space between rows and developers, again, sometimes they're willing, so we've had cases where the developer is willing to, um, there was a hay farmer in the North Country who wanted to continue hay farming, um, just couldn't get his equipment in like seventeen-foot space, uh, it wasn't worth it, so the developer agreed to do thirty-foot spacing between rows and um, increase the footprint of the project, so the developer was going to get the same amount of kilowatts, megawatts off the project, but now the farmer could continue hay on a lot more land, um, they didn't lose those, I think it was thirty acres. So that was a compromise that the developer was willing to make, it didn't cost them anything more, um, but it meant that the farmer had to give up more land, and the town had to be okay with giving up more land to solar, the project was going to be here, and now it's going to be this much. Um, you know, you can make the argument that unless, and this was pretty marginal land for just hay, you make the, the argument that if it's really truly marginal land, like that's the best place to put it, you know, we don't want to eat up farmland, even if it's dual-use, like if we can maximize the amount of solar that's on land that really isn't doing anything else, let's maximize, let's do it as tight as possible, as much solar as we can get out of that, and don't require agri voltaics. So that's the other trade-off, you know, it's been, I think in the solar siding law, it's been abandoned for X, you know, for an amount of time, and it wasn't specified, but I think that would be important to specify, if it's really truly marginal, abandoned for, not farmed for, you know, maybe more than ten years or something pretty long-term, then let's not even worry about agri voltaics, um, and really focus on dual-use where the, the land has some function.
But that, that's the point where the, it's where the The, it's where the. The electricity is, or the pot that the lines are.
Yeah, you have to match a farmer who's interested where the electricity is and where the land. You know, if that land ends up being prime farmland, then yeah, you would potentially want to do the push ag there. Yeah, unfortunately, we're not able to locate it on a lot of marginal land.
What's the narrowest uh. Space you've seen?
I don't know what narrow is. I think it depends on, so sometimes it's uh, it's called two P, like two panel portrait. It depends how tall the racks are, that they'll start shading each other if you get them too tight. So it really depends on what they're doing, but seventeen feet is usually, maybe fourteen is the tightest I've seen. Uh, that's, that's not panel, well. That's usually post to post, not panel to panel. So it's even less panel, panel.
Yeah, I want to make sure I, I fully understood what you were just talking about. So one argument that, you know, be amazed, you know, on. On, like on prime farmland, I believe that um, you know, the, the Ores sort of puts a, a, I think. Kev called it a syntax, and I do know that the, you know, Ithaca area economic development. Has a surcharge if, on, on the pilot, if, if it's prime farmland. And the idea is, of course, to sort of discourage it from being on prime farmland, get that. But the flip side, maybe for farmers in Caroline who have good land, some which is prime, is that they're having a hard time farming as it is. And they actually would like to be able to use part of their acreage for solar development. But if you're making them pay a thirty percent surcharge on the pilot because it's either actively farmed or prime farmland, developer is gonna go elsewhere. And so that's counter to their actual desire of having the stuff there. So. I'm trying to make sure, were you saying that ideally you'd go really, really dense in the marginal land? And leave the prime land alone? Is that where you were just arguing Amanda go?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the problem is that we're not able to do like a master energy plan where somebody says, this is where solar should go and it goes there. Like, this is up to the landowner. Like you were saying, it's where the power is and where the landowner is interested. So if the landowner happens to be an eighty-five year old farmer who has no children or the children have no interest in farming. He can't find somebody to take over the farm. Now you're telling them that they have to stay in farming, whether they like it or not. Like. Under any other scenario that wasn't solar, they could have sold it to a housing developer probably, unless it's really zoned for. You know, the low density or even then, now you could probably put housed on thirty acres. So. It's a matter of, you know, like trying to. Respect the landlord's wishes. I'm sure you're all very familiar with that and, and then also trying to. Allow them to, you know, to do things but not limit them too much. Yeah, so it, it's tricky. I don't know if I answered my question, but you know.
Though, so what Caleb said somewhat surprisingly, I think to all of us, it's actually the very rare case in which the landowner is doing the farming. Um, even if it was a farm, more typically, there's been some other farmer brought in to do that, like, like him or somebody else. And uh. So I guess from a policy perspective for Caroline, the way the original law was crafted and we're just starting to extend now. Is to see solar development as a way better than housing. Of preserving farmland. It's not being farmed now because it's under solar panels. That was our thought, you know, three years ago. But it's feasible thirty years from now to imagine taking the panels off. But if you've built five houses, it's not very feasible to imagine taking those five houses off and revert to farming. So it was seen as a way of helping preserve farmland for future generations. Agricultural takes in some senses even better if it can be made to work because the land has continued to be farmed. And is making some solar energy. And we just want to make the requirement for that so onerous that developers say, ah, we're gonna bypass Caroline. You know, it's too expensive because we have to do all this ag stuff. So that's the sort of the needle we're trying to thread a little bit, that I, I would, we definitely want to encourage solar development. And yeah, see its advantages over, over residential development um for preserving good farming land for future generations.
Yeah, yeah, Lewis County that was one of the first counties to do a pilot that had agricultural takes written into it. Went the opposite direction. They did it well before Tompkins, but they. Had a starting pilot and they gave you discounts for avoiding ag land or prime farmland. And Tompkins really decided to go the other route and start at a base and then charge you more. They think they can get away with it. According to both of them, they aren't seeing any real difference. In the amount of solar that's coming. Tompkins is brand new, so I don't know about that. But in Lewis County, the developers. Because the line, it's hard to find the land at this point. A lot of the, the really low hanging fruit has been picked, so to speak. So um, the developers who have been able to find a farmer who's willing to lease X amount of acreage uh that's on or near. Acceptable power lines. They're willing to pay more. Um, so that I don't think writing something into your laws is going to deter development anymore than. Caroline's probably already having an issue finding. Or who are interested. So you're not at the epicenter of where this is happening. I think Lansing is much more. Likely to.
But will it get more?
Yeah.
Attention in the future?
Likely, yeah. So that's the thing, like if areas are going to get. More infrastructure, it's where the farmland is currently or where this, hopefully where this marginal land is. Um, you know, I think Caroline, you were also saying is like, damn, we, we don't have prime farmland. Like, there's a lot of abandoned land. Um, so it's. That's ideal for the state and for the developer. And so if we can get nice egg and whoever else to build the infrastructure that would accept it, so I. It's all theoretical, but that's what we think is gonna start happening is infrastructure is gonna start coming to these communities that have. Not great land, but a lot of open land.
Do you think that'll be more private infrastructure or what, what's nice egg even have an incentive to do that?
They're required by the state, which is why they're being paid, you know, yeah. And I mean, I don't know what's happening with the current administration, but. The last one in the IRA had billions of dollars for every single phase to upgrade the transmission and, and distribution lines. And so, you know, every state got billions of dollars that then would go to the utilities to do that work. You know, they.
But isn't New York putting it into the, the new high voltage lines?
Yeah, a lot of it's going to the big transmission lines. They're upgrading those, but also. Yeah, the thinking is in addition to those, we would be seeing more transmission and distribution lines. Spread out across the state. There are plans to upgrade the lines anyway. And so. The lines may be there already, like you were saying, that they're single phase. A lot of us will see that in the communities, you know, out of the community. They'll be upgrading the substations to be able to take more power. They'll be upgrading the single phase to. To three phase slowly, you know, twenty years, you know, who knows, it'll take a while.
So are you saying that you're seeing evidence that there are plans to do that?
There are definitely plans to do that. So that every utility is required to submit plans to how they're going to upgrade the, the transmission and distribution lines. So those are being developed.
Okay, uh, that does tell a bit also with Caleb was mentioned the other week, which is, you know, in some sense. Caroline may be near the end of the line just because of where we are in terms of the power lines. That's not entirely a bad thing because by the time it comes here, some of the kinks may have been worked out of doing agricultural takes. So he was actually, as he said, somewhat happy that we might be ten or twenty years away from that kind of development here. But yeah, it sounds like that's the sort of times that you're talking about too, ten, twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, yeah, we just don't know how quickly they can get things, you know. But to your point, yeah, it would be good some, to have some, to, to work on this in the meantime before that happens. But you're gonna get plenty of. Time, because once you, once you hear about it, it's gonna be years before it actually gets put in place.
Alright, so moving on to the next question on my list. Um, so we've sort of, we're just touching on this, you know, would you recommend. Requiring an agricultural take sort of development in certain spots, like should we say? If it's gonna be on prime farmland, there must be agricultural takes and we are gonna find that eventually, but I think agricultural takes will. Have some kind of farm plan associated with it. So there's actually farming going on. So on that assumption, would you recommend? That say, prime farmland be required to have it, or should it be uh actively farmland? Uh, or should it be actively farmed prime land or state, high quality state land? You know, so do you have any recommendations on that score? Or would you say, no, you're right, actually shouldn't require it anywhere, but try to find other ways to incentivize it?
Uh, I, I think a lawyer would have to answer that. Uh, I'm not sure you can require it. Um, because again, it's, it's the landowner, it has certain rights to do what they want with the land. You can. Then they can't do certain things. It's a lot easier than saying they have to do certain things.
Could you do something where you say you need to require. Them to give the right of first refusal to the landowner who's the farmer to farm it or not farm it? Like keep farming.
Developer has to give the.
The, the farmer, the landowner, the right of first refusal to continue to farm it, to turn, to make it agricultural take. So basically the landowner, if he wants to continue farming, the, the developer must comply with him and work with him. But if he's an eighty-five year old guy and you don't want him selling his land to a developer who's gonna put houses there, you'd rather just it be solar than. Then it goes away, because then, then we're not necessarily requiring it to be agricultural takes on his land, but we're saying. That's one way to encourage it to say, okay, at least this guy who's a farmer who's there, give him the right of first refusal.
I, I don't know that you can always say that that's gonna be the best scenario, where that's gonna be the best farmer for that land.
Sure.
Uh, so someone else with like agricultural takes experience. Who would know, you know, ten years we have people who like have experience and equipment that works for growing broccoli under panels, maybe.
Sure.
Um, you don't want to insist that it be that farmer necessarily.
No, if a farmer wanted to do it, now you're sort of saying that farmer's got the right to do it no matter what.
Yeah, I guess.
I think the farmer can do that, like the farmer. It, it's an agreement between the landowner and the developer, that then the municipality sort of has some. Authority over also, but the landowner can do that themselves if they wanted to. In their lease, they could say. I'm gonna be the farmer on this project.
Or no, the, the landowner that says to the developer that this must be agricultural take, even if he's not the farmer. So that he, that it must be agricultural takes and he brings in Caleb.
Right.
Instead. Is that, is there a way?
I think the, the landowner could potentially, again, it's legal, I'm not sure. I don't think the municipality could require it. The landowner could put that in their lease.
Right.
This needs to be farmed. This is what I'm talking about when I say farmed. Do you agree to that? They, they can pretty much pay anything they want because it's an agreement between the developer and the landlord or the landowner. At that point, um, I don't think the municipality could do that.
What about instead of saying that you have to do agricultural takes on, if it's, let's say, prime farmland? You, you were saying like on, on some of them, that one that they spaced it out more and use more, more property, but. Instead of making them do, making them say you have to do farming, just you make them able to do farming better.
Yeah.
Even if they choose not to, the, the ability is there for futures. In case five down, five years down the road, they decide they do want to do.
Yeah, so Kerry Marshers, this person, this woman on campus who's been doing the actual crop studies. Has come up with a list of things that like, if you don't have these five or six things, it's gonna be really hard to do the agricultural takes. So we have been, I think I sent it to Bill a while ago, and if I didn't, I, I can send it to you all. That you could put in your actual solar plan. You could say.
Uh, if you send it to me, I haven't, I didn't notice it somehow, and this is exactly the kind of list I'm looking for, so. Tell us and send it to me.
Yeah, I'd have to dig it up. So we're trying to get it, you know, kind of more peer reviewed, but it's had a bunch of eyes on it and people tend to agree that these are the. So sort of five or six top things that. You, it's hard to acquire them, but you know, you can say, we would like the developer to consider these things. Because without them, you know, like I said, the, the. Infrastructure at the end of the rows. Having some sort of water on site, even for sheep, is not always required to go on a car, you know, Dryden doesn't have any. Um, but for most, like Caleb will say, he needs water. Um, so whether that's a well or. Some sort of infrastructure to get water on site. So there's certain things like that that you really need. I don't know that you can require them of every developer, but we've put them in, so we. We are able to, as part of the Ag Farmland Protection Board, submit comments to projects. To ag markets, and we've put that in every time and. The recommendation basically. Um, I don't know that you can make them requirements.
I think so.
Alright, so that brings us to the crux of the matter, that if, it's the extent that we either don't want to or can't require things. It gets down to incentives. And, you know, one set of incentives is always, oh, you know, less red tape. But frankly, the town doesn't have that much red tape to cut anyway. And then the other is any payments. Now, for a large solar facility, typically that's going to be a pilot. Uh, the, our, our town has not opted out of the real property tax law. Whatever it is, four eighty-seven or whatever, meaning that right now the systems are exempt. You know, from um property tax for, for fifteen years. Uh, but the town can do a pilot anyway, and that's what's happening right now with the one that's on Old Seventy-Six Road. So I know you're talking to the, the I A E D people, but you know, we can't tell them. As far as we, you know, this is what we want you to do for the town of Caroline in the pilot. Partly because they have a vetted set of goals and priorities that has gone through, you know, public review, and they can't just change it for us. So what incentives does Caroline have? Other than saying, oh, please sir, please do it this way. What real incentives can we offer that you're aware of?
Uh, well, so there's a couple of things that um. Some I don't quite understand. So in the conversations with the. Ithaca area economic development, that, that. You can get, so you can have your own pilot with a developer. You can also have your own um sort of. Uh, development benefit agreements with the developer. So host community benefit agreements are pretty common, but. So developers are accustomed to doing those. They're more, you have more leverage where your. Community doesn't want the solar. So it's like, well, okay, we, we really don't want it, but if you do these things. We'll, we'll, we'll allow it, kind of thing. So. You have to have a pretty good reason not to green light a project, and then you have a lot of leverage. So I think the conversation, as far as the pilot, I think that's something that. You as a municipality can talk to Heather about way more than I can understand. Why they're not willing to work more with communities. But, you know, they, they should work with the community when they're developing the pilot. I feel like it's just a matter of like, it's just easier for them not to, but there might be other reasons. But. Beyond that, you can develop your own pilot. So basically the pilot, it has three parts to it. It goes county money, town money and school money. Basically, um, you can say that you're going to opt out of the pilot with the county and develop your own. For the talent part of it. That I've seen. Um, whether the county is willing to let you do that, I feel like they are. I think that's happening with the Lansing and Grunden projects. They're developing their own pilots separately. But you have to basically opt out of the one that you have now with the I A E D.
Yeah, I didn't understand the county part. So yeah, my understanding is that the um, whatever the Industrial Development Agency is, which in our area is the Ithaca. Area Economic Development or whatever negotiates a pilot with the developer. Um, and then the state has set a proportionment that X percent goes to the county. And X percent goes to the school district, and X percent goes to the local municipality in which the product is taking place. And those percentages are fixed by the state. So when you're saying opt out of the county part, what do you mean? You mean opting out of the whole thing so that we do the pilot instead or?
So it's really weird because Tompkins County is, is at the county level. A lot of other. Uh, pilots are negotiated at the municipal level, it, it pretty much everywhere else in the state. So. We're in a sort of different situation, and I don't quite understand how municipalities and the county. Can negotiate pilots together. I don't see why they can't, but for some reason Heather doesn't. So I, I, I'm not saying there isn't a legitimate reason, I just don't know why. But my understanding is you can opt out of that percentage that you would normally be getting from the. County negotiated pilot and say, no, we don't agree to that as Caroline. We will negotiate our own portion for that, whatever thirty percent or whatever it is. We will negotiate our own portion for that, whatever thirty percent or whatever it is, and you can negotiate that with the developer separately.
I mean, that would pretty soon mean that we would get more, man, you know, again, maybe the formula was, we got thirty percent of whatever they agreed to as the dollars per megawatt.
Yeah.
And that might come out to a thousand dollars per megawatt, say. But we instead say, no, we're gonna go away from that, we're gonna do our own negotiation, and we negotiate eleven hundred dollars per megawatt, is that what you're sort of saying? Cause I don't see why they would do that.
Like if you say, like, we are willing to support the project, we're willing to back the project, but we require. You know, a slightly higher pilot payment.
Okay.
That might work, now the developer never has to actually take the pilot either.
I have a question that I think would clarify things a little. So the I A D folks, the pilot that they're negotiating, isn't that for a county level tax?
It's for all three.
For all three?
They negotiate.
I I think the Ithaca School District, according to the state information on. Uh, the web, Ithaca School District opted out a long time ago, did they opt back in?
Uh, so that's that's a good point, and yes, so various municipalities, but I think also institutions like school districts can opt out. Um, and I, you, that's a wrinkle I have not looked into, Will, so it's a good point. Um, if the school district has opted out, theoretically, what that would mean is that. The value added by the s- the solar project would get added for the school district valuation purposes, and they would get money for that. But I don't know, that's how the the law seems to read to me, is that, that's probably clear as mud.
No, I I I follow what you.
And, oh, Michelle, did you wanna talk, I saw you moving around there, okay.
And the the thing is, if if the town were negotiating a pilot, it wouldn't be for the county. Tax portion, it would be for town taxes.
Nice.
So it sounds like, to be clear, what you opt out of is a percent of. The tax that the county would collect on your behalf. Through the agreement, and then you would independently negotiate. Something to get instead, that has nothing to do with the county or the uh, school district.
Right, I mean, you should probably, you probably shouldn't call it a tax, because it's a payment instead of a tax. It's a negotiated payment amount, but it's the same thing as a tax, but.
But all you're doing is exercising your right to collect taxes.
Right. So, um, yes, so, um, under the. Uh, R P T L forty seven exemption, so I unfortunately had to look at it today. By default, all towns are in, towns can voluntarily opt out, or as you said, school just can opt out. If they opt out, a town can still pass a law that says, we've opted out, but we require products to have a pilot. Um, and that, in that case, the pilot actually is not optional, because the 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 local law says they have to have a pilot. Caroline has not, not only not opted out, we haven't, you know, have a law, so anyway, but so it it, so I think there are cases where the pilot is required. Um, I'm wondering, Guillermo, cause you says, I believe from what I've read, it's also possible for the town to completely. Take over the pilot negotiation, and that's the part I'm a little less clear on, so could, are there cases? For solar development in particular, where the town could negotiate the pilot? And the development agency is not involved at all.
That's between you and the development agency, I don't, I don't know if that can happen here in Tompkins County. I I know that that has happened elsewhere, cause it's not at the county level elsewhere, it's basically at the town level. What they've done in Lewis County is they've agreed, all these towns are quite small, and they've said. You're not gonna get very much benefit from additional payments on agricultural take land. If you, you know, if you just collect it on your own. We're not talking about the pilot overall, but just that additional little amount for agricultural takes. Um, and so they agreed to collect it as this other group naturally, Lewis. Collects all the pilot money, this this additional bit, not the pilot money, but the agricultural takes bit at a county level. Here, it would mean each municipality would give up their own, so if development is coming to Caroline. You would pay into a pool that this county held as opposed to Caroline getting in. And that would allow for a lot more money to be, you know, implemented somewhere, but. I wanna address like what the money is for in just a minute, but, um. But the point being that that's not happening in in Tompkins right now.
Right.
So. Can, I I don't know, there's been a, I I've heard of municipalities butting heads with the. Uh, I A D in terms of pilots. And I don't know where that stands, and I don't know what the legal issues around that are, but municipalities are not particularly happy with the fact that. It's negotiated at the county level, I mean. They've argued that the county negotiated the amount that the amount that they say per megawatt is too low. And other municipalities have gotten much higher pilots. And Heather sort of has made the case that she has seen the books, and that's what she thinks is fair. So, again, it's sort of a conversation with her more than whether it's legally possible is one thing, whether it's actually feasible on. You know, personal level, it's another thing.
I just, and just for the record, so, um, it turns out Heather has now left, um, and there's a new person in charge. And the new person in charge has just learned the ropes, cause Mark had a conversation with her this morning, and so, um, we're all feeling our way a little bit right now. So.
I hadn't heard that.
It is a different person.
Interesting.
Yeah, I had her name written down here somewhere, um, but I don't know if I can pull it out right away. Anyway, yeah, there's there's a new new person in charge, Telly, I think is her name, but I'm not seeing where I wrote it down. Alright, so.
Yeah, things might change, but, um, the other, if I could just say, in terms of like, if you're going to either give. Well, so, I mean, it's a little different at your level than at the county's pilot level. But if you're getting a host community benefit agreements or things for, um. You know, if somebody refuses to add agricultural takes, and therefore they're paying extra to develop on land. That is prime soils or active ag land. As a municipality, I would just urge you to think about what that money's going towards, so if the town collects money because. Ag land was not avoided. It might be nice to sort of return that back to the ag community in some way. Um, unanimously, sort of towns that have collected money for developing on ag land have just used the brother stuff.
Um. Right.
Which is your prerogative, but there's more of a push now to say. The community has come up with concerns that we're losing ag land. Uh, and now let's do something about the fact that we're losing ag land, like, can we now support other farmers? Who, in a lot of cases, the farmers are leasing the land themselves that they're farming on. So they have no say in, like, the the landowner sells or leases the land to a developer, but the leasing farmer. Has no real. Agency in that conversation, so now they're just out of being able to farm. On that property, so now they have to go further away, or maybe have to do something to make marginal land a little more farmable. So, anyway, my point being that, you know, if there's ways to work with the farming community to return, to have that pool of money available. To support whatever it is that they need to continue farming.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, so I think it's an excellent suggestion, it's a relatively minor thing that Caleb suggested, but one. Was to take some of that money and put it into like four H programs or something, is developing future farmers.
Yeah.
That idea, but 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 I'm wondering about something more concrete, there are certainly various purchase of development rights options, I mean. Do you have thoughts of what might be done to help to to support farming in in a in a community?
Yeah, and like I say, so sometimes, um, so naturally Lewis, when they did it, they did not have it targeted or earmarked for that. They had earmarked for, I think it was, um, this is small business development. There were three or four pools that people could apply for, so there was like, and again, as a. Community Caroline is not likely to have a huge pool of money, so it's not, not a ton probably, that's this additional for building on ag land. But, um, you could have a grant program, so it has to be administered by someone and all of that, so it's good, it. It has a little bit of complication, but not a lot, so basically, um, it's just a suggestion that if you wanted. You know, you would have to qualify in some way as an ag producer or potential ag producer, um.
Okay.
You know, even if it's added value or whatever, marketing, you know, they could apply for. Uh, I need to now get my crops down to New York City, um, you know, help me. Buy space on this truck that goes down every week or every couple of weeks, um, so. You could review those grants and decide at that point, but it doesn't really have to be so specified upfront what it's for.
No, I think it's an excellent suggestion.
So, so Bill, just, um, looking at the state's R P T L section four eighty seven exemption, uh, list. For Tompkins County, there's three towns, uh, that have, you know, done the opt out. Enfield, Grattan, and Lansing, so it could be worthwhile to ask them, you know, why and what they're doing. Enfield, Grattan, and Lansing, and then there's, uh, five school districts within the county. That have opted out.
Okay, um, yes, that that's that's excellent, and I I will put that bug in in Mark's ear. Cause I think he he's, you know, hot on this topic now, because they're in the middle of negotiating the pilot for the thing that's going in. Um, you know, this proposed, uh, on Old Seventy Six Road, so, um, he and I have been talking pilots a lot today. Um, but but and what he did find out, I think I, as I wrote you guys in the note. Opting out of that section means that all renewable energy developments are supposed to be. Added to the property value and thereby taxed, um, but his feedback from from the county assessor so far is that. He sees no increased valuation due to, say, solar panels being in a house. So the possible downside of opting out is that suddenly everyone with solar panels would have to like be paying more, have higher assessed value. Uh, and pay more in taxes, but that's actually probably not the case, because from the assessor's viewpoint, there's no added value. So, um, I was worried about that unintended negative consequence on residential, you know, owners, but that's, doesn't exist.
Well, uh, I I've heard both things from Tompkins County Assessor's Office. Some some of the assessors will say it adds no value, and then other assessors do say it adds value, so just.
This is from the head guy, so.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know, I know, so that was Jay's thought, and then, and then, but some of the other people who are actually doing your assessment. I'm just saying, do it, some of the other people who I spoke to, which, they're like, oh, yeah, no, your solar panels totally add add value to your your assessment, so. Even though they're not supposed to under four eighty two law or whatever. Uh, some of those guys are adding up a little bit of an extra numbers assessment, because people have solar.
Well, well, they absolutely can't now, what they're supposed to be doing now is if they think it adds value, they hold that in a separate column. That basically says, this is the extra value, but we're not taxing it, they are not in any way, shape, or form allowed to add it to your actual assessment, but that's.
I think they're, I think they are doing it though, anyway.
They they could, they should take that to to the department then, alright.
Well, didn't directly come in through the sales, trueing up to the market. Right, when you true up to the market and the sales, you're using sales data.
Yeah, and what, again, what Jay's saying is he doesn't see, you know, evidence and sales of increased value.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, no, you're right, in one sense, if if someone really, you know, if in general people wanted it more, then they'd pay more for your house. Even if you're in that fifteen year exemption period, and and, you know, the new new owner usually gets a higher value if they paid a lot more for your property, so. In that sense, you're right, what you sort of trues up when you sell the place. Alright, so we've talked about most of the stuff. Um, so, yeah, the other thing was specific design standards, and you say you have a list of five things. That you either have or can send me.
Sure, yep.
Okay, do it again, even if you did it before. Cause I'm not sure I can.
Do it again, even if you did it before.
I I made a note.
Sorry, sorry, I'm slurring my words, getting tired late at night.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I'll, I made a note, I will try to send it to active, find it, um, it's sort of in a, a bullet form, it's not. A full paper at this point, but.
Bu- bullet form is is fine.
Things to think about, um. Yeah, again, if a project is unpopular in your community, then you have a lot more leverage, and like, the host community benefit agreements, you can. Require, um, and those kind of things, and you can, so you can. Tap them more specifically to like prime ag land, if that's your concern, but. Yeah.
Okay.
If a project is popular, then you probably don't have much.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if everyone's like, oh, this is great, um, you don't have much leverage, the developer doesn't need you.
Right.
Give them anything, right?
Alright, that is most of my concerns, do other members of the committee have some questions that? You know, I know we've been inserting them as we go, and that's great, but if there's anything else that we haven't gotten to, uh, now is the time.
If I could just say, so, yes, please, like, jump in, um, but. I think the most important thing is not necessarily what's in the Solar Siding Law, but. That this be talked about with the developer, like, first time that you're approached by developer, um. You know, we try to get the word out to farmers, it's like, agricultural takes is a thing that you might wanna consider. Like, it, the more people that toss the developer as like, we would like to see this happen here. Let's talk about how we can make it happen, if the farmer is interested, if everyone just gets on board in that early conversation. Years before the development actually breaks ground, that's really valuable. Requiring them to do stuff is harder, but I I have found that when they're approached early enough on. Depending on the developer, they're willing to to do it.
So that's the zoning board.
The re- reboard for us, right.
The review board.
Review board, whoever is.
Not not the planning board, yeah.
And that's what Caleb was saying, Caleb was saying that a lot of those developers, they've got money to spend on things like that, so. If you get to them early enough and tell them what you wanna do, they usually are happy to.
It makes their lives a lot easier, like, Tompkins is is not one of the easiest counties to come into with solar. So, developers have already kind of avoided this county to some extent, and as they come in. Thinking that a community is like, you know, asking for a few simple things that aren't gonna cost them a lot of money. That will make it a lot easier in the process, yeah, they're they're very happy about that.
And you can put in your log. What's desirable.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Solar Siding Law, if they read that, you know, on your website and say, or they hear that it's been changed to. We are supporting solar generally, and we're working with our community to support the expansion of solar where landowners want it. Um, but we are also trying to preserve ag land, you know, if you state it that way, then. I think it could work.
Alright, anything else? Alright, well, great, Guillermo, thank you very much for a productive discussion.
It's one thing.
Oh, can I say one thing? Um.
Oh, I suppose.
I have not read the law in a long time, I read a long time ago, but you can't tell them what to do, right? As to whether they do have revotations or not, but do we have in that law that. At least we would like them to, in a minimum, follow best conservation practices? Like, I mean, you can get paid to not mowing law certain times for certain animals, birds, if, you know, all kinds of things. Is there anything like that in the law?
Um, I'd have, I don't think so, I mean, there are provisions for preserving soil quality, et cetera. Uh, returning it, there are things about protecting habitats, but I don't know if there's anything specifically along the lines of what you said, just. Barb or anybody else that worked on the law, remember anything else specifically?
Uh, I don't remember anything, and I'd kind of, um, doubt that we would have written into a law, um, you know, dependence on a federal program. Because federal programs, like you're probably, I think you're talking in like the Conservation Reserve Program and stuff, and and those those things, yeah, those things change. So I don't, I don't think we were to refer to a federal program, but I think, you know, I, I think there is language in there, you know, just. In in general terms about, you know, farmland or, you know, you know, soil preservation kind of stuff, but not. Specific to a pro, an existing program.
And that, we'd put in some language about vegetation, though.
So, uh, here's just a stupid question, cause I'm a a newbie here, uh. So couldn't we just put in some general language of encouragement? But that's ultimately up to the review board or whoever's approving the project, the. But then it's ultimately up to the review board or whoever's approving the project to interpret essentially what they want with the developer early on, right? Rather than saying it must be agricultural take, it must be this, that, or they're just saying we encourage this and then, and then can't, can't the project early on be changed or, or returned down if, if it doesn't look like they're adhering to our, our general guidelines.
Okay, I, I'm gonna interrupt for one second because I want to let Guillermo go. Cause he doesn't probably have to listen to all this, unless you want to. You are welcome to stay.
I don't want to drag on your evening too much with just this. I, I know you have other things. I was just gonna bring up the solar site, cause I, I also recall there was language about you know, endangered species and things like that. So you could put something in there. It seems to me like you were saying about best practices for, you know, for protecting habitat and things for in terms of when you mow and.
Right.
I think it did, I can't open it right now. I'm trying, but um, I think there are times you, you can put in more language around your restrictions, I think.
It sounded like the soil people um, are are coming up with some good, solid best practices for uh, soil treatment in solar sites.
Kind of. It, it varies and, and there's, it, it's so site dependent, what kinds of soils you have and the.
I mean, in terms of treatment of the soil, they were talking about it out at the carpenter farm.
Okay, I mean.
What our law does is leans on an ag and markets guidance document and.
You can't, I mean, uh, the nice damn rigs come into play only on projects that involve thirty acres or more of prime farmland. So a lot of your projects, I think, wouldn't really meet the criteria that they have to follow ag and markets.
Are you saying that's ag and markets requirement or ours? Cause I don't remember that in our law.
Ag and markets.
Okay, I think our law says if it's prime, actually, if it's important farmland, which is both prime farmland, prime farmland drained and maybe statewide importance. They're supposed to follow those guidelines. So I think that's what we put in our law, but.
Yeah, and that's what I'm wondering. I don't know legally if you can require that in your law. I'm not sure because they're, they're only required to follow that if it's thirty acres or more that's being disturbed.
Uh, I, 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 I'm not, I think so, as long, you know, we can't tread on stuff over twenty-five megawatts. But for twenty megawatts and under, I think we are allowed to say that, but um, our, our lawyer didn't flag that at any rate, certainly when he went through review.
Yeah, cause that, that's in there, but that's more about like soil, like
Yeah.
Where you put the topsoil and um, restoration of the site and things like that.
Yeah.
It's not so much about management of the site once it's built.
Um, back to Brad's point, again Guillermo, you should feel free to slip out the door when, when we're not looking. Um, so, so Brad, I mean, and, and Bruce is there and he can shake his head vigorously. On the one hand, the review board may like some flexibility, but on the other hand, flexibility drives them nuts that they, i- it's much easier for them to interpret and decide and do things if things are more clear cut. So vague language, when we're working in the zoning laws, came up a lot, you know, so vague general principle language with stuff that they in general were not in favor of. Um, and it can get a little too squishy because we may have intended something and then they, they bend way over the other way or something, so. Um, yes, it can be used, I think, with a certain light touch, but it's not to be leaned on too heavily. Um, because it's too open to interpretation and, and makes the review board's job too hard.
If I could say, so I was reminded one thing. So there's some comments in the solar site law, which I was just able to open, um. The other piece to think about is sometimes the municipalities are required the site get vegetated. You know, ground cover within six months. Um, trees around it that are fully developed within, you know, the first year and all this. That limits the agricultural takes that you can do on it to a large extent, so. I'm not a farmer. I'm not on the egg side, actually. That's not where I came from, but I'm learning more and more that really you have to till the property uh, in order to grow crops of any kind, most kinds. So if you're requiring crops that are going to be under eighteen inches, the land's going to have to be tilled. It's going to be bare ground. And if you're not allowing that, it becomes a conflict. So just kind of think about that and whether you want that, I mean, like, um, you know, if it's tilled ground, it is going to have more chance of runoff and, and all of that. If it's currently being tilled, if it's currently being farmed, you're already used to that, so. It just becomes a, a, just be careful about like limiting things too much. It might have other consequences. I, I kind of made some comments to that.
Yeah, I mean, even, even, even what the current law says about uh, the uh, vegetation maintenance, you know, there's language like, um, you know, maintaining vegetative cover, um, native ground cover under and between rows. Is broccoli native to New York? That's the kind of, you know.
Would say it has to be there full year, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so.
No, uh, uh, exactly what we're going to, you know, this law was written sort of just before agricultural takes became a thing. And so requiring a ground cover was what everyone said you ought, had to do because you didn't want runoff. But like you say, now that maybe we want some things to be able to grow crops, that's not the right requirement anymore. So like, it's a good, an excellent point. So something we'll have to keep in mind.
And then the, the screening as well, we've been talking to folks who want to put in apple trees as screening. Those are going to take a lot longer and they're going to be not very good screen in the winter, so. Do you want to balance that? And where do you require screening? You know, if it's like a, a regular road, it's a busy road, you know, you're going to get people coming in here telling you where they want screening, um. But, you know, they might be okay with apples there, especially if it's two rows of apples, maybe it'll block enough or whatever it might be, so. Yeah, again, sort of some flexibility would be good in order to allow more sort of crop varieties or agricultural take potential.
Okay, and yeah, I, I will forward, you know, the commented doc you sent me to everyone. And then we'll go through that, you know, line by line at a later meeting. That, thank you so much for that work.
That's not, yes, sorry, I did get it to you earlier, um.
That's, that's okay. We've been busy anyway.
Thanks for coming.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Yeah, and any follow up questions young around, so. All right, appreciate it. Helpful, yeah, thank you.
All right, great.
Let's know when they get six foot sheen.
All right, uh, so I think we'll move on to approval of the, of the minutes in the last meeting, um. And uh, I'm trying to remember, because that was quite some time ago. Barb, did you send me some corrections?
Um, I'm looking in my notes now. There might have been, uh, there been one correction or something.
If, if so, I would have incorporated them at the time and we're going to assume that I have so incorporated them. And I will make sure they are incorporated. Uh, are there any other changes to those minutes?
I, I don't, I don't remember. Well, I don't remember exactly. That's, bye, thanks. Yeah, Brad, we're, uh, no way, well, Brad is listed here. I don't know. I don't know what the.
Maybe that was the preview.
Yeah, I don't remember.
All right, well, um, so is there any uh, disagreement with approving the minutes from September sixteenth?
No, no.
All right, great. All right. Uh, Michelle, anything to report from the town board?
Uh, no, I mean, we're working on the uh, budget and um, the uh, you know, town hall renovation and um, oh, uh, you know, uh, Monday is the groundbreaking for the broadband project.
Wow.
That's the, uh, and, and the, the groundbreaking is for the small building that's going to be next to the new town hall. To house some of the equipment and a generator.
The new town hall or the new town barns?
Town hall. The, the building is going to be next to the town hall.
The existing town hall. You said new town hall. I was confused.
Oh, I mean, there's the old town hall and new town hall, right?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it has a library.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, now I understand.
Yeah, it's going next to that. Uh, and so that, that's the groundbreaking, which is on Monday. So.
Okay.
You kind of, so nothing has happened about changing the zoning law or anything like that. We've been.
Yeah, oh, I, I didn't expect that to happen anytime soon. Don't worry. Uh, I won't hold my breath, but you guys have the stuff.
I won't forget it.
Yeah, uh, any um, thoughts on how long the rollout of that broadband project is? Are we talking one year, five years, three years?
No, it's got to be finished by uh, next year. I believe that's the way the funding goes, so.
I've got the thing. It says.
You like dried fiber? That is dried fiber.
Uh, by December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Yeah, for the initial, I mean, they can keep rolling out to more houses after that, but the initial project, you know, for the, for which we have the funding of close to, I think it's between eleven and twelve million dollars, has to be finished by the end of twenty twenty six.
And, and how much the town does that cover?
Uh, I think it's supposed to cover, um, you know, we just had like another hour and a half meeting about this and I've I just don't remember exactly, um, it's supposed to cover the unserved and underserved.
Uh, okay.
You'd have to look at the, you know, there's a map online. I think it's posted that's gonna, that shows how it's gonna go.
That makes sense.
Um, it depends on, you know, like they're going to go according to where the poles are. You know, and in other words, they're not going to pick and choose routes, you know, for for those things, but I think it's, it's supposed to be the underserved and unserved. And underserved are people have DSL, for example.
Okay. Great, that, that makes a lot of sense.
It, it says twenty-six hundred and seventy-three parcels.
Is it actually going to be called dried fiber still?
It is still called dried fiber, but Caroline, although most of it's in Caroline ironically, but um, you know, they're the ones that started it and we're partnering with them.
Yeah, I mean, are they going to keep rolling it out in Dryden uh, as well to cover more?
Yeah.
And uh.
Going to Caroline, I, I saw like two thirds of it. I, I could be wrong about that, but anyway.
I have a storage unit in Dryden and it's far cheaper than anything else. I can tell you that.
You what?
Okay.
I, in my building in, in Dryden, we have, I have dried fiber. And it's, you know, it's a commercial building. It's far cheaper than anything else, so it's a good deal. It's not coming down that way yet, yeah.
It's forty-nine dollars a month for what, seven hundred, um.
Residential. It's seventy-five for a commercial, so.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's going to be a good, it's going to be a, a good deal and I encourage everybody that can to sign up for it.
Yeah.
You can get all the information in the town, new town hall, um. It, I'm, I'm waving the postcard around. It's a blue postcard. It gives you everything you need to know to call them, tell them, come to your place.
And I, I, yeah, I think it's helpful for them to, even though, even if you may not be able to get it for a while, it's helpful for them to know who wants it.
Yeah, okay.
I would pursue that, you know, sign up and they will let you know when it's available.
Great, sounds great. Yeah, exciting. Stunning project.
Uh, supposedly, um, uh, Governor Hokel's supposed to come to the groundbreaking, but you know.
Oh, that's cool.
Well, the two, uh, so.
Okay, um, we are going to discuss the solar law um, a bit more. Let's see, yeah, so just for a little bit, but I want to first talk about our next meetings because it is nine o'clock now and I don't want to for our brains totally fry. Um, so we are scheduled to meet on Tuesday, November eighteenth. Is that goo- still good for folks?
Yes.
Hopefully.
Yes, okay, all right, so we'll keep that. Um, then the time would be about a month later, looks to me like December sixteenth, also a Tuesday.
Works for me.
Okay.
Good for me.
Yes.
Brad, Bar- Barb, yes, Brad, you okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's, we'll do then. Okay, great. All right, let me see if I can find my notes here. All right, let's just talk about this one thing and then we'll see how we feel. So, um, it, I had posed a few things that I'd love to make some progress on tonight and like we did actually a little bit during the meeting with, with Guillermo. Um, but I think in particular, I'd like to talk about sort of what we might mean for agricultural takes in Caroline. Um, but the, the other work is sort of what guidelines or standards should they meet and until we get some of that other information from him, I think that would be premature. And uh, whether it should be required, he raised a question about whether we could actually require anywhere, so I'm going to have to research that. And I'm gonna, oh, let's talk about these last two things. Okay, the last two things are simple, so let's talk about them first. Um, like I mentioned this time in an email. Right now, the zoning law has just, um, uh, basically, um, site plan review for um, solar facilities. So if it's a small thing in a house, it's just a, a permit, there's no review whatsoever. And if it's either the medium scale, which is um, above a residential system, but less than two and a half acres. Or if it's a large scale, which covers more than two and a half acres, then, I think it's two and a half, then you go through site plan review. Nowhere in there is there a special use permit. And as came out in the discussion tonight, I think there might be important reasons to have the leverage of a special use permit. Um, if we want to indeed enforce things like agricultural takes. Um, so I'm tempted to suggest to the town board that they change that in the zoning law. Uh, but that's out there for our discussion right now. I, to be honest, don't know how the zoning commission left that. And if that was a decision changed by the, the town board, or if the zoning commission only had site plan review from the beginning, I no longer recall. Um, but how do you folks feel about recommending that a special use permit be required for a large uh, solar facility?
What, what's the purpose of that again? What's the, what's the purpose of that?
So, so again, i- in general, a special use permit is a, an additional sort of um, review process by the review board in which it's designed for systems that the town agrees are appropriate uses in the town. But because of their very nature or whatever, might require some special conditions placed on them to make sure they fit into the town. Um, and you know, the, the, the most obvious one usually is like operating hours. Maybe you're fine having a gas station. But you don't want lights blaring in a town twenty-four hours. So you say you can have a gas station where great gas stations are fine. But live hours of operation have to be limited to six AM to ten PM. So you can place certain restrictions on the operation of a business. Normally a zoning, you, you can't do that in most most parts of zoning, but in the special use permit, you can place limits on how the business is conducted. So, um, in this case, the purpose would be to say, okay, they've agreed to do agricultural takes. But three years down the road, how do we make sure they're still doing that? How do we keep them doing that? And that would be okay. To have a large solar facility fit in our town, we think it fits best on this nice agricultural land in a way that maintains agriculture, so you must maintain agriculture. And if you stop doing that, your permit gets revoked. So the leverage would be that they have to keep doing the stuff they promised to do, which was to fit in the community at the farm. So that's how that goes.
And if they stop, then they stop doing agricultural takes, then what happens with that special use permit?
So I think that upon the review, again, you know, now we're jumping to things. So the review board could say, no, okay, you know, uh, or maybe it might go to the appeals board at that point, but they'd say, okay, where you can't operate here anymore. And then I assume the developer would sue or do something. And what I don't know is would administrative judge agree with the town that that was a reasonable request? Cause it's in our law that they have to have this and side with the town, or they say, no, that's an unreasonable request. Your, your permit was always illegal from the beginning. And they can keep operating as they want. I don't know the answer.
But, um, Bill, just, uh, so a special use permit is issued at the time that the project is seeking initial approval and getting started, um. Do special use permits ever have a, you know, renewal requirement on them, you know, that the like the special use permit is for five years or ten years and then after that, you've got to renew the special use permit?
Yeah, I can give that a very big, I think so. Uh, a part of that is based on, on Caleb sort of seemed to suggest that, but I, and I almost remember that, but I don't remember for sure, but it seems to me that that would be reasonable to be able to do, but that's a good question to research. All right, I'm writing down, can one make them renewable?
Yeah, I'll just say it sounds like, that sounds like something the town attorney would have to address.
Yes. Yeah. No, that, that's a, yeah. Is, I mean, if, and if, if Mark is willing to have me ask Guy that question, I will. And if not, you know, I'll do a little bit of online research first. Cause sometimes you can poke up these decent info online and then I usually have Guy confirm it or something like that. But, um, yeah. That's, that's a definitely legal question.
And what Guillermo was saying, it's hard to require agri voltaics. So it seems like it may be hard to have a special use permit requiring it.
Um, yes, I, and I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if I fully, I mean, I, I get the two sides of that, like can the town actually mandate that? And I, that's I guess a question to go with, um, to the lawyer as well. Um, it seems to me that if they've entered into an agreement with the town to do it a certain way, and the special use permit is predicated upon that, that they could keep going that way. That, that, that part's okay. That you, you, you haven't. We may have to the mandate that they do an agri voltaic thing, but we might say, if you're going here and we give you this price break and they agree then to do it in an agri voltaic way, we might be able to get them to continue doing it that way. It's subtly different, but yeah, I don't know. That's a good question.
Yeah, I think maybe it becomes an issue of contractual law versus, you know, putting a law in the books requiring blanket. You, you agreed to this, so yeah, stick to it.
Right. Exactly.
So, but yeah, I think, you know, having that maybe as part of a pilot contract. And then maybe instead of revoking the, a permit, you're just revoking their, their money. Their money and monetary incentive.
And, and I, I'm not sure I would be supportive any way of recommending to the town to require agri voltaics, to be honest with you. Um, just because there's so much flux right now, what it is, I mean, I, I'm not sure that I would say let's require.
Well, and because the other thing is then, you know, um, like Gilmer was saying, like, there's, there's a lot of marginal land where you don't want to necessarily have wide space panels. You want to cram it all in there because you're not going to farm it anyway.
Right.
And you can just raise the panels up to that minimum height and have sheep in there. It's not really agri voltaics. This is sheep are managing the, the grass. Okay, fine. But do we want to otherwise do anything other than maybe requiring them consider sheep as grazing at vegetation punishment? I don't know.
And, and Barb, yeah, I share your reservations about requiring. I brought it up mostly because it seems that encouraging is going to be difficult. Um, but that was the question I've been trying to ask people like Caleb and, and Guillermo is, you know, would you see a reason to require it somewhere? But yes, I think we have to decide whether we want to. Um, and I'm, I'm trying, I, I did not mean to suggest that it's, it's a foregone conclusion. That we require it. The need for an SUP, go ahead.
Sorry, Bill. I, I just, I think one of the things that Gilmar, Gilmar, I can't say his name.
Yeah.
Uh, 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 said that I really liked the one, the one town did Lewisburg or whatever, that they had two levels of pilot, like you, you know, if you come, we'll give you a pilot. And if then, if you do agri voltaics, we'll give you even a better deal, a sweeter deal. And, and so I think that's a way of not necessarily requiring it, but incentivizing them. Yeah.
Well, uh, uh, agreed, but that may be exactly what we can't do here. Because the, um, in general, and this is where I'm trying to learn the limits of authority. The power to negotiate a pilot is vested in the Ithaca area economic development. That's what their name is, not like agency, but that's them. And they negotiate the pilots for all these facilities in town. And they do not have a thing, what, what they do for agri voltaics is they waive a fee. And Mark and I are still trying to figure out exactly what they meant by that fee, because the woman today gave a different answer than what I, you know, detailed into. The town is not doing a pilot under the current system in our county. And so we can't do exactly what you suggested, which I'd love to do. That's what I would do. I would say you do agri voltaics, you get a 30% cut on, on the pilot payment. But we can't put that in our law or something like it because we're not negotiating the pilot. And because of that, that gets us back to saying, well, is there are some circumstances in which you really, really want it to happen and then they make the requirement? I'm still.
How did the IA, how did the I A E D end up being the negotiator?
So the state in general has set up, so what Guillermo said, I think is maybe backwards. He said, most local municipalities do this. My understanding is the state set up various, what they call I A Ds, industrial, no, I D As, industrial development agencies. And they vested in those I D As, the authority and ability to negotiate pilots. And again, and the state set the percentage of the pilot that goes to the county, school district and the town. That's all state level stuff. Um, but I found hints, though not solid evidence that saying, but towns could still negotiate their own pilot. Um, for some cases, and I think solar development is one of those cases, but I haven't found solid information on that. Uh, by solid, I mean, that's what Google AI returns. And I don't trust that until I can find an original source saying this is really true. And I, I just, in my hits, I didn't come across it and have time to pursue it. If I'm hearing of a volunteer to research that question, I will gladly accept.
Well, if you go out to, if you do start Googling it, you end up at the NYSERD site and they refer, they link you to the current law. You can choose the current law version. So you can go back in time if you want to know what it was in a certain year. But they all say over and over again, uh, town, you know, all the different levels of municipalities have the right to negotiate a pilot. So that's why I, I was wondering, how did we, uh, end up with the I?
Well, if, if, if my question for you, Bill, would be, is there a way for us as a town to just have some sort of agreement with the I A E D folks, when, that whenever they're negotiating a pilot on our behalf or a pilot in our town, that it meets these terms, because we want to put these terms into our, our rules or whatever, that we want to have this kind of double level pilot? If it comes to our town, is there a way for us to just make that agreement with I A E D?
No, uh, that, that's exactly the question I asked of the director. Um, and she went to their lawyers and the lawyer said, no. Um, and the rationale again is that the pilots they're negotiating are based on a set of sort of principles, you know, a, a, a policy statement that they have. And that policy statement went through a public review process to establish. And so they are bound to pursue that. And that policy statement does not currently say we'll offer, you know, a, 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 a 15% break for doing agri voltaics. So until unless they change that policy and they may be, they just did it in 2025, maybe they'll do it again soon. Uh, no, they, they, they really, uh, can't or won't devi- deviate from that.
That's right.
Projects, it's.
All right. So back to, so absent even the question of are we requiring it or not? Uh, uh, for the, to be agri voltaic, let's skip that question because I think that's a, a good question to ponder. Um, and I think the answer is probably no, but SUP or not, is there any other, would we want to have a special use permit for a large solar facility? To be honest, I don't know the rationale for not having one in the first place. It seems exactly the kind of thing that maybe one would want to have one for, but so that's what I'm looking for right now, just on the SUP question.
Seems a reasonable thing. I, I think it seems a reasonable thing to, to require, especially, especially if it uh, can be a renewable upon review kind of thing.
Okay. I will look into that question. Any other comments? Adam, Brad, Will?
I, I guess I just don't know enough about what would be the benefit, you know, of it, other than, I mean, I agree with you. It seems like, uh, a large solar facility should have some sort of review, but how's that review different with an SUP versus a current site plan? Is it redundant? Right. I, 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 and then this is just my naivete of our, our, our local government.
Uh, it is, it is not that naive. Go ahead, Will. Sorry.
I think when we were talking to Caleb, um, what we discussed was, you know, who, who's to say that they're doing a, a doing? At some point we had the discussion about the need for someone who knows something about the farming to be making the judgment about whether, um, they were fulfilling their contract.
Yeah. But that, but that's enforcement, but getting to the permit process of like the site plan review versus, versus SUP. I mean, what's the additional benefit, I guess, to the town for an SUP versus site plan?
But if it's something that has to be adhered to, then you're automatically faced with enforcement. Or if it has to be renewed, then you, you can't just say, yeah, okay, review board person, go out and have a look, right? Like, would you accept their, a negative review by it? Okay.
No, yeah, and I agree, Will. I mean, I think we talked about maybe somehow having the ag committee or somebody involved in, in somehow monitoring that really was farming going on. And, and Brad, don't feel bad. It is not at all naivete. The, the nuances between site plan review and special use permit are, are in the arcana of, um, you know, municipal regulation. Um, site plan review definitely only happens at the beginning of a project. The, our zoning law specifies that the site plan review and the special use permit review um, take place concurrently because otherwise there would be so duplicative work. So basically they're both done in concert, so there isn't duplicative work. Um, and again, what the site, uh, sorry, what the special use permit section does is, is allow in a way that is otherwise not allowed, the town to reach in and impact some details of the operation. Normally you can specify in site plan review, you can only specify things about the site, like maybe where the buildings are on the site or how big the buildings are or that kind of thing. Special use permit lets you touch the operation. And so they're slightly different things. And again.
I would say then SUP definitely makes sense for a large solar. Thank you for the explanation, Bill.
Um, no problem. Took only a couple of years of experience to get, so. Okay. Um, all right. I have only one other question for us to deal with now then, um, and then I think it's late enough. And actually what I else I wrote, I should probably send you guys anyway. So, um, small detail. So as part of the law, something that Caleb brought up was, you know, oh, in your vegetation management plan, have them do X, Y, Z. We don't have a vegetation management plan specified as far as I know. It seems like an awful good idea. And indeed might be a good way to sort of push grazing. And so what the language I have down is that maybe, yeah, we should require vegetation management plan. And that plan has to sort of state that they evaluated grazing and state the reasons why they're not using grazing. Uh, why their other method is somehow better, uh, for this site. Uh, that would be my proposal of what we do. So how do people feel about that?
Sounds great. Sounds good.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think the current language says they, they must either use grazing or some other form of, of mowing their grass. Um, so yes, I think that would be good to have them specify their plan and say why they're not using grazing if they're not.
Okay, great. Well, I think that's probably a good place to call it for the night. Um, I did draft, um, some thoughts on what might mean agri voltaics for us. That may be a moot point if, again, we have no real leverage on making it happen or not happen, but it's still probably worth having a definition. So I'll send some of those thoughts along to y'all and we can talk about them next meeting. And if anybody else has thoughts of how they wanted to find agri voltaics or on what guidelines you think an agri voltaic facility should meet, um, send them around to the whole group as well. And we'll be, I'll, uh, when Guillermo sends me his list of five things, I'll send that to everybody. Sound good?
Great. Yeah. Um, Bill, can, can I make a, a request? Um, to, to the extent possible, um, it's helpful for me if things that we're actually supposed to review and digest are sent, um, more than a day be- before the meeting.
Yeah. Okay. No, I, I hear that. Um, uh, yes. And I, and I know it may not appear that way. I, I have tried to get things at least a few days ahead, but, uh, this got, got set back. And yes, I think that's a very reasonable request.
Yes, it wasn't meant, it meant as a criticism at all. You're doing a great job.
It should be. I, I, I really feel bad when I send you guys stuff on Sunday or Monday. I feel really bad about it. And I, I just suddenly I was going to like say, oh, I'm going to talk about this stuff at the meeting. No shit. I better send it out now because it's going to come up earlier in the meeting. And so I sent you guys a real big digest on, on what I was basically just learning about in terms of the real property tax law. And I, I do apologize for that dump.
Should I stop the recording?
Yes. If you could delete my expletive.
I'm going to stop the recording.